All right, good evening. It is seven o'clock on the nose. We'll go ahead and get started. Welcome everybody to City Council. We have a full house this evening. I think we're all here for the fire department, which is always a nice evening when we can honor them. A special shout out, now I'm not supposed to do this, but to my, basically like my second mom and dad from Richwood, Gary and Karen that came up here. Good to see you. Thanks for coming. We want to, as we enter our moment of silent reflection this evening, we want to remember Jack Rigger. Jack is in the ER this evening, one of our council members. We also want to think about Dave Thomas. Dave is traveling. Traveling mercies for him. And our community lost Betty Hevner this week. She's part of the Hevner and Cutwright Funeral Home here in town, well-known lady in the community. So let us go into our moment of silent reflection, followed by the pledge, please. Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mr. Sanders, if you would please, as we begin our meeting agenda under recognized guests, I believe that you have a special guest that you'd like to introduce to us this evening. So I will turn the floor over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and indeed I do. As everyone knows, we are preparing to produce the World Association of Marching Show Bands World Championships 2023. Wamsby 2023, July 17th through 24th, Karen Buchanan. And this is only the second time that this event has been held in the United States. The last time it was held in the United States, it was produced in Palm Springs, California. And we have had the privilege of working closely with a colleague advising us and helping us prepare for this worldwide event. And he agreed to hop on an airplane early, early in the morning out of Palm Springs. They had to fly into Pittsburgh, and he arrived here just a little while ago in the Buchanan, the gentleman who produced that event in 2017. He is a Baccana Director of Bands at Palm Springs High School, an educator, conductor, producer, director, international adjudicator, clinician, and judge. His bands have performed around the world in more than 15 countries on five continents. In fact, he performed in the inaugural parade for President Obama. Jazz bands have performed in concert with Barry Matalow, Max Weinberg, Carol Channing, and Suzanne Somers. And he has judged, as a sanctions judge of the World Association of Marching Show Bands, for national, regional, and world championships in Canada, Germany, Spain, Britain, Colombia, Malaysia, and Indonesia. And he's going to bring greeting from Palm Springs and say hello. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Bryan Ingleson.
Hey!
Thank you, Bryan. And he appears tonight also as the International Coordinator for the USA representing Wamsby. Bryan, take it away.
Randy, thank you so much. It really is a pleasure to be here this evening. And I didn't know what to expect when Randy asked me last week, and I am really delighted to be here this evening. If you'll excuse me using my phone for notes, it's the way that I do things now. I just wanted to, first of all, extend greetings from the Palm Springs City Council, members of the community, the Chamber of Commerce, the parents and students at the time when we held the world championships, but also today's students and parents who are once again looking at eventually being able to host another world championship back in Palm Springs. It was such an incredible event, and I am so happy that Buchanan won the ability to be able to do this event. And I also bring greetings from Robert Eklund, the president of the World Association of Marching Show Bands. This organization is almost 30 years old now. And every year, except during the COVID years, we held world championships. And it has literally been all over the world. And so this year, Buchanan joins this really exclusive group of cities that have hosted the world championships. One of the things that I really like about working with Randy and working with the committee is that this is a smaller community like Palm Springs. And when you consider that these events have been held in cities where there's millions of people, Copenhagen, Bangkok, Calgary, literally cities of millions. But when they came to Palm Springs, when they came to Rustica, Germany, when they came, when they come to Buchanan this year, they are going to see your community. They are going to have a feel for the beauty that is this incredible part of the country. And really, you are going to teach them about what America is about. And I think we have an exceptional group of bands that are coming in from all over the world. So I really look forward to it. I commend you for doing this. It's a lot of work, and I know Randy has been working incredibly hard and all the members of the committee. And we just look forward to continuing working with you. I have some commemorative medals for the members of the city council that I'd like to present. This was from Palm Springs. And every person who participated in the festival was awarded one of these medallions. And today, they're highly sought after. And we also have some pins and pins from the city. The mayor was very excited to provide those. However, they weren't available until eight o'clock this morning, and by that time, I was almost in Denver. So my wife picked them up, and I'll be mailing those to Randy today or as soon as I get back. And so you'll have those next week. But on behalf of Palm Springs, on behalf of Wamsby, and really on behalf of all the people who were involved before, congratulations.
Beautiful, Bryan. Thank you, yes.
I've only got one medal my whole life. I've got two.
I'm going to cover my head.
Yep, well, figuratively or literally?
Both.
Right.
And I know there's, I know there's other couple people that are missing.
We're missing you tonight, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Bryan will be joining us, right?
Nope.
I was going to say, Bryan will be joining us tomorrow with some of the business people who have already made commitments to help with monster ships, had a luncheon at the Opera House, and he'll be doing tours. And we're also going to be welcoming in two individuals from Calgary, Canada, tomorrow, Mike Hewitt and Heidi Habrig, I believe are their names, with the Calgary-
Stampede Show Band.
Stampede Show Band.
The Calgary Stetson Band, the Calgary Roundup Band.
Right. So he'll be doing a site visit with those folks from Calgary, Canada, beginning tomorrow afternoon through Saturday, and Bryan will be with him through Sunday. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
In addition to Bryan, we have a couple of local folks here in the room that have been working alongside Randy to put this together, and that is Jim Valinson in the back and Elisa Lively just down from him. So-
Haley Gompers.
And Haley Gompers as well. So we have, we have a lot of local folks from across the community that are working to put this together. So thank you all for your efforts as well.
Elisa serves on our Board of Directors, and Jim and Haley have been working in our office almost daily now, helping to pull, pull everything together for Wamsby. So very quickly, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, we need volunteers. So go to our website, it's W A M S B 2023. Sign up to become a volunteer. We appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Kaylee, hello. Welcome. Happy New Year. Welcome back to class.
Hello, everybody. So I am now the Wesleyan Student Senate President, so I am no longer coming to these meetings.
We didn't have any doubt about that. So congratulations, yes.
Thank you. So the new community alumni relationship is Kaylee. So here's the new special young lady that is going to talk to you.
Good evening. My name is Kaylee Brinkman, and I'm a freshman exercise science major from Clendenin, West Virginia. I'm the new alumni and community relations chair for the student senate. I'm also a summer scholar and on the WE lead youth security team. Thank you for having me here tonight, and I'm excited to be representing Wesleyan Student Senate at the city council meetings. We have a few events that already happened on campus, as well as a few that are coming up. On Saturday, January 28th, Wesleyan hosted a Special Olympics prom. Wesleyan students, alumni, and community members came together to offer dresses, makeup, hair appointments, and snacks, in addition to help set up for the event itself. We are also looking forward to doing the Polar Plunge on February 11th, hosted by the Special Olympics. Registration for that event will open at 12:30, a costume contest at 1:30, and a plunge at 2:00. Our own president, Sadie Nichols, will also be plunging. The WE lead poverty reduction team shared unknown facts about the Buchanan Upsher community during the lunch hour on January 30th. We believe that in order to truly live in the greater community of Buchanan, we have to best understand the strengths and challenges our community faces. The WE lead youth security team is preparing to dig into the community by meeting with Buchanan Upsher Middle School counselors to see how we can be better community partners. Wesleyan is currently holding a plastic bag drive for a sustainability project where students will make plastic yarn. These bags will go to the really, really free market, the free market mills offered two Saturdays for the month. Wesleyan students have been volunteering with the mills and the Free Appalachia Organization. Today on campus, we hosted a Red Cross blood drive. Students will be partnering, partnering with Upsher County Trails to support a few trail movements this semester. The first one is set for Saturday, February 4th. Students will also be assisting with the Livestock Association Elimination Dinner on February 18th. Division Two Day is on February 22nd, and student athletes will come together to package Easter eggs for the children served by Upsher County Head Start. Our men's and women's basketball team will also be volunteering and hosting a Special Olympics basketball tournament on February 12th. On February 25th, the college will be hosting its annual Orange of Black Day, a recruitment event of all accepted students. We expect over 100 students and their families to attend this experience and the campus culture, many of them spending the night in town. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of good people came from Clendenin here, by the way. There's, there's quite a few Clendenin people in Buchanan, so Herbert Hoover?
Yes.
All right. All right. Up next, why everybody's here. We are always pleased to, when we have the opportunity to recognize our first responders. And we cannot ignore the fact that the past few years have been extremely difficult on particularly this department. From a fire that took out a major piece of our downtown to another fire that resulted in a heroic lifesaving success right behind my house on Pocahontas Street here in the city. So tonight-
And he's gonna bring greeting from Palm Springs and say hello. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Brian Ingleson.
Hey!
Thank you, Brian. And he appears tonight also as the international coordinator for the USA representing Wamsby. Brian, take it away.
Randy, thank you so much. It really is a pleasure to be here this evening. And I didn't know what to expect when Randy asked me last week, and I am really delighted to be here this evening. If you'll excuse me using my phone for notes, it's the way that I do things now. I just wanted to, first of all, extend greetings from the Palm Springs City Council, members of the community, the Chamber of Commerce, the parents and students at the time when we held the world championships, but also today's students and parents who are once again looking at eventually being able to host another world championship back in Palm Springs. It was such an incredible event, and I'm so happy that Buckhannon won the ability to be able to do this event. And I also bring greetings from Robert Eklund, the president of the World Association of Marching Show Bands. This organization is almost thirty years old now, and every year except during the COVID years, we held world championships, and it has literally been all over the world. And so this year Buckhannon joins this really exclusive group of cities that have hosted the world championships. One of the things that I really like about working with Randy and working with the committee is that this is a smaller community like Palm Springs. And when you consider that these events have been held in cities where there's millions of people, Copenhagen, Bangkok, Calgary, literally cities of millions. But when they came to Palm Springs, when they came to Rustica, Germany, when they came, when they come to Buckhannon this year, they are gonna see your community, they are gonna have a feel for the beauty that is this incredible part of the country. And really, you are going to teach them about what America is about. And I think we have an exceptional group of bands that are coming in from all over the world. So I really look forward to it. I commend you for doing this. It's a lot of work, and I know Randy has been working incredibly hard and all the members of the committee, and we just look forward to continuing working with you. I have some commemorative medals for the members of the city council that I'd like to present. This was from Palm Springs, and every person who participated in the festival was awarded one of these medallions, and today they're highly sought after. And we also have some pins and pins from the city. The mayor was very excited to provide those, however, they weren't available until eight o'clock this morning, and by that time, I was almost in Denver. So my wife picked them up, and I'll be mailing those to Randy today or as soon as I get back, and so you'll have those next week. But on behalf of Palm Springs, on behalf of Wamsby, and really on behalf of all the people who were involved before.
So we all.
Congratulations.
Beautiful, Brian. Beautiful, thank you, yes.
I only got one medal my whole life. I got two.
I'm gonna cover my head. Yep, well, figuratively or literally? Both.
And I know there's, I know there's a couple people that are missing.
We're missing you tonight, too. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brian, thank you. Brian, welcome to Buckhannon, and thank you for, thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir.
And Brian will be joining us. Go ahead.
Nope.
I was gonna say, Brian will be joining us tomorrow with some of the business people who have already made commitments to help with monster ships, had a luncheon at the Opera House, and he'll be doing tours. And we're also gonna be welcoming in two individuals from Calgary, Canada tomorrow, Mike Hewitt and Heidi Hobrigan, I believe are their names, with the Calgary.
Stampede Show Band.
Show Band.
The Calgary Stetson Band, the Calgary Roundup Band.
Right. So he'll be doing a site visit with those folks from Calgary, Canada, beginning tomorrow afternoon through Saturday, and Brian will be with through Sunday. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
In addition to Brian, we have a couple of local folks here in the room that have been working alongside Randy to put this together, and that is Jim Valinson in the back and Elisa Lively, just down from him, so.
Haley Gompers.
And Haley Gompers as well. So we have, we have a lot of local folks from across the community that are working to put this together. So thank you all for your efforts as well.
Elisa serves on our board of directors, and Jim and Haley have been working in our office almost daily now, helping to pull, pull everything together for Wamsby. So very quickly, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, we need volunteers. So go to our website, it's W A M S B twenty twenty-three, sign up to become a volunteer. We appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Kaylee, hello, welcome. Happy New Year. Welcome back to class.
Hello, everybody. So I am now the Wesleyan Student Senate President, so I am no longer coming to these meetings.
We didn't have any doubt about that, so congratulations, yes.
Thank you. So the new community alumni relationship is Kaylee. So here's the new special young lady that is going to talk to you. Good evening. My name is Kaylee Brinkman, and I'm a freshman exercise science major from Clendenin, West Virginia. I'm the new alumni and community relations chair for the student senate. I'm also a summer scholar and on the WE lead youth security team. Thank you for having me here tonight, and I'm excited to be representing Wesleyan Student Senate at the city council meetings. We have a few events that already happened on campus as well as a few that are coming up. On Saturday, January twenty-eighth, Wesleyan hosted a Special Olympics prom. Wesleyan students, alumni, and community members came together to offer dresses, makeup, hair appointments, and snacks in addition to help set up for the event itself. We are also looking forward to doing the Polar Plunge on February eleventh, hosted by the Special Olympics. Registration for that event will open at twelve-thirty, a costume contest at one-thirty, and a plunge at two. Our own president, Sadie Nichols, will also be plunging. The WE lead poverty reduction team shared unknown facts about the Buckhannon Upsher community during the lunch hour on January thirtieth. We believe that in order to truly live in the greater community of Buckhannon, we have to best understand the strengths and challenges our community faces. The WE lead youth security team is preparing to dig into the community by meeting with Buckhannon Upsher Middle School counselors to see how we can be better community partners. Wesleyan is currently holding a plastic bag drive for a sustainability project where students will make plastic yarn. These bags will go to the really, really free market, the free market mills offered two Saturdays for the month. Wesleyan students have been volunteering with the Mills and the Free Appalachia Organization. Today on campus, we hosted a red blood, a Red Cross Blood Drive. Students will be partnering, partnering with Upsher County Trails to support a few trail movements this semester. The first one is set for Saturday, February fourth. Students will also be assisting with the Livestock Association Elimination Dinner on February eighteenth. Division Two Day is on February twenty-second, and student athletes will come together to package Easter eggs for the children served by Upsher County Head Start. Our men's and women's basketball team will also be volunteering and hosting a Special Olympics basketball tournament on February twelfth. On February twenty-fifth, the college will be hosting its annual Orange or Black Day, a recruitment event of all accepted students. We expect over a hundred students and their families to attend this experience and the campus culture, many of them spending the night in town. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of good people came from Clendenin here, by the way. There's, there's quite a few Clendenin people in Buckhannon, so. Herbert Hoover?
Yes.
All right. Up next, why everybody's here. We are always pleased to, when we have the opportunity to recognize our first responders. And we cannot ignore the fact that the past few years have been extremely difficult on particularly this department. From a fire that, that took out a major piece of our downtown to another fire that resulted in a heroic life-saving success right behind my house on Pocahontas Street here in the city. So tonight, we ought, we wanna recognize those here efforts as well as promotions. Several of our firefighters have, have tested and continue to hone their craft and are ready to show our community their accomplishments. So Chief Kimball.
Thank you. Let me get my stuff organized here. So tonight, we, we have basically a three-tiered accommodation system going to happen. First off is the promotional process that we went through. Maria Potter and Shane Jenkins, if you please come in. And Tanner Smith and John Brugnoli, please come up front. So last year, Shane and Maria were hired as probationary firefighters, and they successfully made it through their probationary period, and they, they did with fine colors. The process that the Buckhannon Fire Department puts in place is amazing. You all really took about the bull by the horns and, and did your jobs, and it really showed in the event that I'm gonna talk about here in a little bit. So they're, they are no longer probationary firefighters, they are firefighters, and I'm so proud of them and the, the men and women that helped them get to this point. So Chief Lynn, or whoever has their badges, and whoever wants to put their badges on for them. You wanna feed that one? Oh, it's a, that was a jack. He's mine. Sam's just like him.
Just like his dad, too.
His mother. Congratulations, guys. John and Tanner, please come to the front of the room. John and Tanner have been with the Buckhannon Fire Department for five years now, and that gave them the opportunity to promote to lieutenant, both on the promotional exam and passed it. And tonight, they're being announced as lieutenants of the Buckhannon Fire Department. Proud. The test is very difficult. It has about six books and about fifteen-hundred pages of studying, and they really did a good job. They are also instructors, so they've really advanced their firefighting abilities, not only for us, but for the surrounding area. So very proud of them, so. Congratulations, guys. Okay, I have a list of names here. When I call your name, please come to the front. Captain Backsa, Joey Backsa, I'm sorry. Captain Lynn Backsa. If they're not here, we'll take care of them later. Firefighter Justin Boggs. Lieutenant John Brugnoli. Captain Glenn Davis. Captain Brian Elmore. Firefighter Shane Jenkins. Firefighter First Class Steve Michaels. Firefighter Maggie Petito. Firefighter Maria Potter. Firefighter First Class Ethan Smith. And firefighter Hunter Wilfong. So back in November, the first, the council meeting in December, I had a very emotional talk up here about an event, and I'm gonna get emotional again. So how many people in here were watching the Buffalo Bills game when the football player went down on the cardiac arrest? Was anybody watching it? And you saw a team come out and take care of that gentleman on the field and do CPR on that gentleman, correct? And everybody was amazed. Probably the biggest thing that ever happened to CPR in America in years. Now, everybody wants CPR because they saw it. They got a visual of how it works, how a team works together to save a life. We're minus a couple here tonight from the November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two event at one-seventy-two Pocahontas Street where we saved a life because of this team. And I saw it firsthand. The team came together, the team worked, the, the prior training, the prior togetherness, the prior brotherhood worked that night. And today, we're talking praise about how well our training program works and the dedication that not only the career staff, but the volunteer staff puts in for our community. So I'm here tonight, I have a combination of pins for all, everybody that's here that was on that event, and I'm so proud of everybody that's here. So this is a big event for us. It's not very often in our line of work, we get to stand up here and talk about positive stuff. Usually, we see negative. And, you know, and we wanna do good for our community and continue our training and move on down to where we can have more impact on more lives. So, so Mayor, I'll help you because I know there's several of them. This pin goes right an inch above their name tag, and they can wear it during special events. Sorry, this is a little bit. Chief? Yes, sir. Thank you. Good work. No wonder they call them that. You can reposition that later. Tell me we're best friends, or not tell me we're best friends.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Why do you go faster than me?
It's 'cause you had John over here.
That's true.
It's not perfect, Lynn.
Good enough, I can fix it.
Proud of you. Good job. I mean, I can't say much more without getting Jerry out again, but to sit back and watch is just like the team came together as everybody arrived at different times, it was just a flood. And that, that's what first responders do, and we're, we're there to make somebody's worst day better, so. And that's, that's our goal, so. Thank you. With all that being said, there, there's another thing I wanna present, and this is to the mayor and city council, because without you all providing the resources for us to do the training and to go out and, and get involved in the community, we wouldn't be in this situation. So I'm very proud to work for a, a government entity that really backs our first responders, whether it be police, fire, and, you know, it, it's, it's a great day to come to work, and, you know, we're working on a training facility to enhance our abilities. So this is for city council and the mayor to put here at city hall, and thank you for your support, so. And put that on your pumpkin. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Anybody wanna say anything?
Just, just to echo what, what Chief just said, I want you guys to realize, you know, three years ago, Maria Potter wouldn't have been on that engine. You know, the staffing work, you guys bought the fire hose that, that we were, she was able to handle by herself because it's twenty-five percent less miles of reaction, production and weight. You know, there, there's small decisions that we make Thursday nights up here, first Thursday night of the month, meanwhile, and I don't think that sometimes you guys are able to see the results of that as much as we are, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Counsel, I'd entertain a, a three-minute recess to allow the room to clear, and then we'll proceed with our business. ... session. We are back in regular session. Okay, Chief Kimball, you still have the floor, sir, and we will entertain your department report.
Thank you, sir. Been just to advise you all, I've presented a potential budget to AMBI to look over for our filming budget sessions. There are some items in there, you know, that we really need to look at in the near future. Air packs is one. I don't know if you remember, 2017, at the time, Chief Townsend went to California and got three ones that were, that department had got grants to replace their old ones, and we were utilizing their old ones. So, we've had them for about six years now, and they are starting to fall apart. We are currently working with Region Seven to write a grant again. This will be the third year that we've tried to write a grant to replace those air packs. So, hopefully, we may have to look into the budget for that if we do not receive that budget by October, because there's a year leeway, like everything else on ordering stuff. So, if you order in October, it'll be October of 2024 before you get it. Couple other things that I mentioned in the discussion was Engine One, the 2009 Suffolk. Some things about it to try to extend its career at the Fire Department. Engine Eleven, from where it was put in the ditch out on Brushy Port, it will go to Suffolk to get fixed. That's Columbus, Ohio at the end of the month. I've been working on the IAP with Steve Wyckoff, the OEM Director for the Strawberry Festival in Wombley, getting that all tied down, trying to get the EMS and fireside for Wombley. We're going to use the Strawberry Festival as a template for everything we're going to do for the July event. So, that way, if we need to make corrections, we have time to do that. The Country Roads Fire Expo was a success. We had over 70 participants for the weekend out there, some very good speakers. Everybody enjoyed it. The food was good. The only complaint we had was basically the climate control with the Armory is controlled, I guess, from Charleston.
Columbus.
Yeah, somewhere. It was frigid in there. So, that was really the only complaint we had from anybody, was it was cold in there.
But Chief, I won't say that all the speakers were happy, that nobody fell asleep.
Yeah. That's true. So, we had a very good time, had some good sponsors that came in, people, vendors that came in. It was a very good time. Joey and all the crew did a wonderful job setting that up. We got upcoming training, fire officer. We just finished the Fire Officer One, which is like succession planning for people coming up to be an officer in the Fire Service in West Virginia. You have to have a minimum of Fire Officer One, and to be an administrator, you have to be a Fire Officer Two. So, we just finished the Fire Officer One, getting ready to start the Fire Officer Two. We're going to be having an extrication course out at the Mudlick Facility with the buses and some vehicles out there, and that'll be a county-wide training. It'll probably be free or very cheap. So, WVU Fire Service Extension will be putting that on. And we're also, I think it's February 27th, if anybody is interested in becoming a firefighter in Upstate County, we're having a firefighter one, and if there's enough participants, that class will be free. So, you don't have to be with the Fire Department to take the class, and if you ever think you're going to be interested in it, it'd be a prime opportunity for anybody to take that class, and it'll be held at Buchanan Fire Department. And that's about all I have, unless you all have any questions.
Any questions for Chief?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. And if you saw tonight, the dress uniforms. We just received these dress uniforms, and this was part of the volunteer money that was in the budget, city budget last year. So, every volunteer and career staff got a dress uniform. The volunteers helped pay for that, too, but money came out of the city budget to pay for this. And the way I look at it, we look good, we feel good, we do good. So, that's, if you noticed, everybody looked very professional.
I think that should be the daily dress code.
It probably wouldn't be great going to fires in it, you know, the dry cleaning.
I don't know, putting the pins to that coat, it's a pretty thick coat, so.
But unless you all have any questions?
Well, I want to congratulate the achievements of the Buchanan Fire Department. Councilman Rigor and I were talking, and there's been a lot of effort put into it long before I was privileged to become a member of council, but as City Recorder, I'm very proud of our department and what you, the men and women, do every day.
I'm very proud of them.
And, you know, we're hopeful that, you know, you continue on this path of ascension. We get the training facility, we support that.
Yes, sir.
Try and pull, we have to think beyond, you know, we have to think about the delivery of emergency services out into the county, our first due, and there's a lot of, we're going to be having a lot of interesting conversations in the next few years, so.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate you, your leadership on this up to this point.
Thank you.
Let's hope for the best going forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Chief, I love looking at the empirical statistical data that you put together for last year.
Yes, sir.
1,219 calls in 2022. 821 of those, roughly a third, two-thirds of those calls were in the city limits.
Yes.
So, those other 400 calls that occurred outside the city limits, what kind of bang for our buck do we get when we talk about financing our Fire Department? Because we're up to one point, between 1.1, 1.2 million dollars now.
Yes, sir.
And that's basically coming almost exclusively from the residents of Buchanan.
So, yes, and, you know, the Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department receives roughly about $25,000 a year from the county fire fee. The county fire fee, when it was set up 20-plus years ago, was signed upon that it split seven ways, okay? And when you look at the, what is collected, a big majority of that comes from the protection area in our first due. And, you know, I sent the mayor an email, and I've done some, there's 3,700 households outside the corporate limits, but in our first due, and there's about 2,300 inside the city. There's 222 businesses outside the corporate limits totaling about 2.4 million square foot of business space outside the city limits. So, there's a lot that we protect, and, you know, we get $25,000, just like any other volunteer Fire Department in the county. And also, and this is something that I've tried to figure out why it's in place, but the state funding for the Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department is diminished by about $4,400 a quarter because we have paid staff. So, for the ones that are trying to do better, the state diminishes the income for the volunteer Fire Department. So, a typical volunteer Fire Department gets about $48,000 a year from the state. The Buchanan Volunteer Fire Department gets about $28,000. So, they penalize you for having, for trying to do better. That's the way I look at it, so.
Well, I think many of us who follow the developments with Corridor H over the past, you know, many decades now. I took a trip over to the Eastern Panhandle just a couple of weeks ago, and more and more of that highway is complete. We've heard the projections that the traffic on that highway is going to increase about 300%.
Yes.
When it's finally completely done, all the way to Virginia. We can anticipate that as that traffic increases, there are going to be more and more calls along Corridor H, old 33, new 33, right? I just, I think that our council, it's something that we missed the ball on during my time as mayor. And during a number of years before that, as city attorney, we talked about the first due fifth. I think we really got to sit down and crunch some numbers and try to be more equitable when it comes to funding our Fire Department adequately. I know Councilman Rigor and Councilman Thomas both speak about this, you know, randomly from here and there, too.
There needs to be some tough talks, there's no doubt.
Absolutely.
And, you know, it's very difficult, as we try to expand our abilities and provide more for our communities, it takes more money. I mean, everybody in business knows that. And, you know, there has to come a point when there has to be something from somewhere else.
Sure.
You know, and, you know, and I'd be more than happy to sit down with any of you and discuss buildings and responses and stuff like that, but, you know, when that time comes, I think that's a discussion that you all need to.
Sooner the better.
Yep, that you all need to come up with, and I mean, I'd be more than happy to be a part of, but, you know, but yeah, when you look at, if we were providing the emergency medical calls outside the city limits, that call volume would be about 2,000 calls. So, but as, at this point, we cannot, with the staffing and, you know, fuel prices and everything else, for us to run every cardiac arrest in, you know, in our first due would be very difficult right now.
Harvey, I would hope we could get that on an agenda coming years.
Well, I think it's also good to have discussion near, as we enter our budget discussions, because that will help us to know where we are and where we need to be to add staffing and to continue to improve equipment.
I mean, as the financial, you know, people, council and AMBI, fire trucks are not getting any cheaper, fire gear is not, you know, when we wrote your grant last year for air packs, an air pack was $8,400 a piece, and we need 30 of them. This year, they're $9,600.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't get any cheaper.
And that equipment's not getting any younger.
No, no. And when you look at an SCBA, that's somebody's lifeline. You don't, you don't want to, you know, nobody wants that, so.
Thanks. Tell the guys to keep running.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Might go see if everybody's getting a doll pepper.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, before we go to the next one, I recommend we move F-5 to the table. It goes along with what we just talked about.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. F-5 is Public Survey for Emergency Services Study, and many of you will remember that some time ago, the county and the city collectively combined their efforts financially to hire Dr. Jeff Harvey to conduct a Buchanan and Upstate Emergency Services Study. And in our packet is Mr. Harvey's update that covers completed tasks to this point, task currently ongoing, upcoming tasks, and I'll just read the discussion that he presented. "In early January, we met with Tabitha Perry and Randy Sanders to regroup on the project. We realized the project had been delayed, and the meeting was a means of A, kickstarting the momentum of the project, B, establishing a process for accountability to ensure it doesn't fall behind again, and C, an opportunity to discuss revised invoicing for the project. Creating a standard document to enable an objective examination of our capabilities was more difficult than anticipated. Many of the standards that exist within emergency services are more accurately recommendations. Regulation-driven standards are either few and far between or established a minimum capability. As an example, West Virginia Code sets forth that county shall have an emergency management position, but the expectations of what that position should do are not outlined in the code. There are professional organizations, grant programs, et cetera, that prescribe actions, but those are tied to the mission of these organizations or the intent of funding. For other emergency services entities, there are organizations and standards. For example, NFPA for the Fire Service, Kalia for the law enforcement, and a commission on accreditation of ambulance services for EMS agencies, that are excellent outlines, but they do not appear in code in the traditional sense. Our efforts to create a standard document for the study have tried to account for this by identifying the maximum regulatory requirements. We can find that identifying additional best practices on top of that. Through this effort, or though this effort is not the sole reason for the project being delayed, it did require more time than we anticipated. So, since our status meeting in early January, we have started to receive resource inventory data that will help us compare what is available locally to the standard documents that have been created. As we collect the inventory information, we'll be talking about the responses within our agencies to fill in any gaps, ensure we are reading the data correctly, and we have conducted interviews with other communities in and out of West Virginia to discuss how they've addressed some of the challenges we are facing. We are also in a position to collect feedback from the general public via an online survey. The survey is intentionally brief, and we're interested in our residents' concerns as it relates to potential emergencies, as well as their opinions on what our critical challenges are." They, the original agreement was that the county paid $10,000 and the city paid $10,000, and we were billed for half of that, and Mr. Harvey has said they were not going to bill us for the second half because of the delay in this project kickstarting, and that he's now sharing some of his time with the Office of Emergency Management, DSHM, that is county-based as well. But, Mr. Mayor, that's the report that I promised to bring you and council. It will keep us updated. Tabitha Perry, myself, will be the liaison, reporting back to council from time to time, and Mr. Harvey himself will be here to present more findings, so.
Thank you for that report.
And I mean, the, you know, our reason that we undertook this was so that we could have a body of information to guide our decision-making with things like first due and the delivery of emergency services outside city limits. So, I'm glad he's back on the table here, and, you know, we can incorporate this information into our conversations about first due.
I think it'll be very valuable as we approach those decisions, and the county just added that survey to their website, and I'll make sure that's up on our city website by the weekend. So, it'll be an active survey that all residents can participate in.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe our media outlets could help us with putting that out there as well.
Just to be clear, we don't have to take action on it.
No, no, that's just a discussion. Yeah, but I felt like this was a good place to do it after that conversation.
Sure.
So, appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Okay, rolling back up to C, as you'll notice Jerry Arnold is not here, but I do have a brief report from him this evening, so if you'll indulge me just one moment, please. This is his report for February 2. Brad Hawkins and he have been working on raising the houses on East Victoria Street that the Upstate County Board of Education purchased. He says here that they're 85% completed, but I'll tell you, I was through there today, and I think it's a little bit more than 85%. So, that area is much improved there, near the corner where you turn into the bus garage or to the bus loop. He attended an online auction, as you, as we talked about in the last meeting, and he and Jay went down to Peters Town, West Virginia, in Monroe County, to Peters Town Middle School, and the auction yesterday was, it was yesterday evening, we were not successful in getting the gymnasium equipment, which, as we all know, that was the bleachers. But we did purchase some metal storage cabinets for the street department, stainless steel table, and menu board for Stalker Youth and Community Center, and some classroom furnishings for the, for the CAC. So, bummer on the bleachers, but they went for a nice, pretty penny. Our entry-level driver training program is going well. He has administered several unit tests since the program orientation, January 17th, with about a 90% passage rate, so that's good news there. The fence for the Police Department impound lot has been installed at the Mudlick Facility and will be moving, and they will be moving the storage container from the Factory Street lot out there next week. And also, as we previously discussed at several, several council meetings ago, cameras have been installed at North Buchanan Riverfront Park on Main Street here at City Hall and the new impound lot on Mudlick, and we're, they're just waiting for links to program them. The street department, one concrete crew has been working on the Gateway West project, and a second has been pouring the walls for the salt storage bins, and then they'll begin next week the installation of the Madison Street Lot Electrical Services. If you haven't been down there recently, it is starting to really take shape, which is good news, and that'll be done as we enter the spring season for our Strawberry Festival. There is nothing new to report under sewer, and nothing new to report underwater, under the waste department. We had a meeting this morning, and we've hired two employees, and they're both doing very well. The Waste Collection Board has also begun a discussion about conducting an audit of the commercial customers and how those rates relate to residential customers, and also how our inside city limits customers, how that rate relates to outside city limits customers. And we want to thank CJ for bringing this subject matter to the table, and we will continue to have discussions to try to come up with improved solutions for rating. And then finally, under engineering, the Tenerton Booster Station, the bid openings for both the contracts were held on January 11th of 2023 at 1:00. The apparent low bidder for the contract A was pro-contracting with a bid of $271,000. The apparent low bidder for contract B was also pro-contracting with a bid of $275,000, and a decision we made at next week's Water Board meeting on awarding those contracts. And that is all for Jerry's report. If you have any questions for him, contact him either tomorrow or sometime next week.
Can't call him tonight.
AMBI.
We can call him. Let's all, let's all give him a call, so.
Were these bids aligned with our estimates?
On the?
The 275.
The contract, the.
271.
Pro-contracting.
No, I don't know them.
I don't, I don't, I don't think they were.
They're higher.
I think one was higher, I think they went back, but Jay would have to tell.
Yeah. Okay, Finance Director, Ann Beryl, is here this evening to give us some, I don't know if it's good news or not, but she's going to give us some news, so.
Lot terrible news. What give you news? Okay, so your balance is January 2023, general fund, money market and checking, $744,587. Your CD is $86,000. Spending some money. Historic landmark savings, $3,000. Capital campaign for Stalker Youth Center, $439,000 with a $12,000 pledge, $451,000. Coal tax, $65,000, $579. Municipal stabilization, $915,000. Flood control account, $78,000. Consolidated Public Works Board, $90,000, and they have the cemetery CD at $235,000. Sales tax, $2121,000, and the mayor mentioned at the last meeting, we received that payment for the last quarter of $540,000. The American Rescue Plan account is $1,978,000. And your bills to be approved, the ones I should point out to you, breathing air systems is $1,000 for semi-anal preventative maintenance, $1,000 to my Buchanan for, after hiring the firefighter. $3,600 ESO solutions for fire recording software, $3,096 LE gear engineering, and that was for the lecture, a lecture they did out at the fire training. $3,300 Scott Electric for supplies for underground electric at Madison Street Project. $1,300 roughie trucking for Stone on the Florida Project, Florida District Project, $4,900, RDR Energy, concrete for the Florida Street Project, and another $2,300 for the concrete for the Gateway West, RDR, that goes to RDR Energy. Trade Works, $12,281 labor on South Ford Street Project. $1,600 to Central Supply for E-Bar for the salt sheds. $14,000 to Trade Works labor on the CAC basement waterproofing, and $27,000 Tri-County Electric for the FEMA Grant Number One Generator Project. And then we also spent $5,000 to create Buchanan, that was built in the budget for Festival Fridays for the fiscal year, this fiscal year 2023. I'll give you an update, too, on the USD application for the Stalker Youth Center project. We, Jay and I received back the pre-application from USDA, and they said to move forward with the other things, which, there's several other things that we have to do. And I want to kind of go through those real quick, so you know this is going to take some time. They want a financial feasibility study. They need the financial statements. They need the financial statements. Now, some of these we've already sent. The things that were readily available, we sent to them. They want evidence that other credit is not available. There's going to need to be an environmental report. They need to know our existing indebtedness. They'll need a preliminary architectural report, we're working on that. Agreement for the architectural services, we're working on that. They'll need an agreement for accounting services for the city. They'll need the legal services agreements that the city has with legal. So basically, that's Tom's and Bond Counsel's agreements.
Part payment?
Yes. No, Tom, Tom, Bond Counsel and Tom, yes. So Bond Counsel statements, I also need those. Documentation of the service area, that all falls into that feasibility study. Inside of it has several items that needs to be collected, and I'm in conversations with them about that, with the USDA. They'll need a comments from the Appropriate Regional Planning and Development Council, that'd be Region 7, survey for ensuring equal opportunity for applicants, and then they want a conflicts of interest statement. They're also requiring a pro forma of the city's financials, so we'll have to outsource that, and we're going to also have to outsource the environmental review. So all of this is kind of coming as we're, at one time, as we're going through it. So we'll come back to council for permission to seek these outside services once we kind of get some numbers together for those. In the process, we're going to have to have a public hearing, so between this pre-application, which we have now back, and before we get an approval of the loan, we'll have to have a public hearing for the public to come in and be reminded of this project, and they can make comments at that time. And then, of course, all of this has to be, everything that we do, USDA needs to be notified as we're doing it. Like I said, some of the things are already, we already have them, we've already sent to them, so we're working on those. I personally perceive this being a few months, especially some of those studies that need to be done, because those will have to be contracted out.
Right. It's a process.
It's a process, but the thing is, the one that says evidence that other credit isn't available, we're really not going to know interest rates until we get closer to the end, when we can go to the banks. Because right now, if we went to the banks, they're not going to hold those rates. By the time we finish this, we're probably going to be at least.
Well, look at all the loan revisions we've done here recently that I've signed, and then, I mean, yesterday, the feds raised a quarter percent again, so yeah, nothing is going to be held.
Yeah, so we won't really know those rates to be comparable to with USDA until we're, we've got a lot of this finished. That's what I want.
Thank you. As we think about the whole, you know, the question folks always ask me, even some of our Stockard board members, when are we going to break ground? I mean, it's, is this process with application to USDA going to take another 60, 90 days, something like that? Is that?
If you want me to be honest, I'm six months. I say, I say it's going to take six months to get this, all of these processes done.
So is it realistic that?
They're doing drilling over there today, actually, to do soil samples, to see what type of foundation is.
Is that part of the architectural stuff?
Yes.
So realistically, we're not going to break ground in 2023? Is that your, is that your prediction?
Maybe late 2020.
I think if we could get enough through the process to where we're, and we feel comfortable and where we feel like construction bids can come back reasonable, we probably could go ahead and have a groundbreaking just to keep it moving. And then, because that's more ceremonial than, than actually, the next day, there's going to be equipment in here to start building the gym.
Well, and that's why I'm reporting this, because we are moving, it's just slow because of all the paper which we have to go through and all the hoops we have to jump. And, you know, I mean, when you start seeking outside sources to help, and that's, it's valid, you know, do a pro forma.
But if we could get a loan marked in an attractive rate for the, how many years? 30 years?
It's a, 30.
30 years. Well, it would be, I think it would be almost against our vibe to be able, just to jumpstart it with a much higher rate for 30 years, just to maybe save a couple of months.
Well, I mean, just think about it, if it really, truly, and I don't think we're at three, five anymore, we might be at four. But then, if you go to the banks and.
It's over eight?
Seven or eight.
They won't mark him for 30 years either.
Not, not right now, not with the volatile, not with the volatile market the way it is. We also need to be very, we all, we need to, we really need to hammer down what our construction bids are going to be, because that, that's a major key here. We all have seen, inflation doesn't just hit those of us that go to the grocery store, I mean, it's hitting those who are buying materials heavily. So we want to make sure we get construction bids that we, that fit what we set out for from our community meetings and what the city has set out for, with the budget. So, we appreciate you.
Then we get to all the Bond Counsel, so that's why I'm just saying.
Well, yeah, but I think, you know, at the last, I think it was two meetings ago, when Councilman McCauley raised a question about an update. I think it's healthy that you're giving us these updates.
Absolutely.
And providing the answers before the questions continue coming in, you know, gives us something to.
Jay, I'll keep you updated on the status of those things, but we will probably come back, like I said, and ask for permission to.
Right.
After we get some numbers together on this outside.
Do you want to go ahead and talk about the, your budget revision while you're, while you're there, while we've got money on the mine?
Sure.
While we have money. Yeah.
It's not a very big budget revision, I'm not quite sure where it's at.
In the very back part of the packet.
The Excel sheet that you all like to look at, it seems to be more explanatory than the.
Means something we can understand.
Something I understand better honestly, too. It's line by line, so it's simple, simple budget revision. So revenues and expenses. So in the revenues, you'll recall, we received a re-clean-up grant for $100,000. Tom O'Neill is working on some properties that we had identified to tear down for this money, and so that, we're going to be closer to that being ready. We're going to have possession of some properties, we believe, very soon. So I want to go ahead and get that money in there, so we'd be ready to start the project as soon as we get the possession of these properties. So it was a $100,000 grant up in revenues, you'll see $100,000 coming in. We'll have to pay that money upfront, but then we'll be reimbursed, and you'll see the expenses down here, $100,000 out for that same grant. Then the other items kind of ties into the F1 request from Art 26201. Couple things there, events, adding $22,700. The 700 is to kind of cover that Grinch request of money, so put that in there.
The Grinch Beach, yeah.
Yeah, the 20,000, council had talked several times about giving Strawberry Festival 25,000, and the budget actually had 5,000 in it, so I'm putting that 20,000 in there to give to them. And then the 2,000 is the request from Art 26201. It was a request for the, this fiscal year to finish out the MIB Gallery, to house art in there for this year. And they had a request for the next fiscal year, but all of those requests for next fiscal year are coming in, review committee is looking at this, but those won't be presented to council only during the budget session. So you'll only have to deal with the ones for this fiscal year. So that's what I have in there, and I don't know if anybody wants to.
The rate was 100,000?
100,000.
So raising the strawberry festival from five to 20?
25.
To 25?
Yeah, there's five already in there.
20,000 additional?
We gave them 25,000.
Last year, yeah.
But that was because they were in financial trouble?
We actually, we actually gave them 35 last year, because we gave them an additional 10 to help with the gamble amusement issue.
You're serving on the board?
I think it's, 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 there have been significant improvements made, and the strawberry festival is really a very well-oiled machine at this, at this point. And I think from council's discussions, that if, if we could have some, some positive impact on the festival, council was supportive of continuing the $25,000 support.
That was talked about last year, after the budget was already finished, so that's why I had to add it here.
Yes, we gave the 25,000 last year for the festival, plus an additional 10 to help with the gamble issue.
I might point out that this year, when they submit the request, they'll have to submit the financials, just like that everyone else does with that funding request form. This is some old business here.
Well, I would, I would encourage council to assist, you know, one more, at least another season, because it's so volatile, you know, one more, something like COVID comes along, we hope once in a lifetime, but, you know, bad, one bad week of rainstorms, where the carnival is pretty much inactive, could have a very negative effect on it. And then in another year, we can review it a little closer.
Yeah, but there'll be, there's requests coming in for next year, and they won't interest it.
Right.
That 22,000 was pulling out of council contingency.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want us to get blinded, well, they're healthy now, but in live events, you know, you can, you can get tripped up very quickly and have a very.
Well, I think that our, our goal is not just for the festival to maintain, we want the festival to continue to improve from a quality standpoint for, for the, for what it provides for the community, so.
That's where some of the conflicts arose in the past, with us advocating Jabba Park and them wanting, but we've worked through all that?
We've worked through all that, yeah.
We're in line with what we're trying to.
Last year, the carnival delivered one of the largest checks that it ever delivered to the festival because of the, because of the remodel worked. And so that area is going to, that's, that's why we're putting, if you see all the, all the green tubes down there, we're, we're investing in, in that being our carnival spot from here on out. It just works very well.
All the other event.
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I did want to be sure, they were sending a consistent message to our other requesters. R26201 is on the list tonight, the Grinch folks, the barbecue bash, whatever it is, notwithstanding our universal affinity for the festival, everybody's being held to the same standard.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. I don't want that to get lost in this conversation.
No, revenue review, had some discussions about that and trying to maybe tweak that agreement a little.
The festival, just so, the festival has the, the funding request document now.
Sure.
As Ambi mentioned, this is, this is for this current budget year, so they have it to present to us for our budget time coming up in a few weeks.
And remember, I mean, the Grinch was a huge success. R26201 did the fabulous job with our art gallery and so forth. But we have our, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but Laura Meadows, who's served as the executive director of the CBB for 12 years, I think you can attest, this West Virginia Strawberry Festival fills this community. It fills, it puts heads in beds, it is an economic driver, second to none, really. Am I correct?
Yeah, certainly. I mean, you've traveled throughout the state, and people know Buchanan for Wesleyan and for the strawberry festival.
That's the other thing.
I mean, those two things are very.
And donuts.
Well, yeah, obviously donuts. But no, the goodwill, there's, there's a value you put on goodwill.
Yeah.
And you're right, Laura, you know, when you travel the state, like Buchanan, even out of state sometimes, Buchanan, well, Wesleyan there, we do this, oh, the strawberry festival, you know, so it's all good.
And you, and you said it right, when, when you first came back here and became involved with the council, you said the strawberry festival has a fantastic reputation outside of this community.
It does.
And you, the further you get away from Buchanan, the better, the bigger the reputation of the strawberry festival has.
We take it for granted sometimes, you know, but the further you get away, exactly, it is a, it's got a huge reputation.
If you're ready to entertain a motion, I am. So move.
We have a motion by Mr. McCauley, a second by Mr. Rylance, this is a resolution. I'll go ahead and call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pam, are you still with us?
Pat Buckloo?
Aye.
Okay, there we go, thank you. All right, Mr. Sanders, I'll defer to you for the roll, the roll call.
All right, once again, Ms. Buckloo.
Aye.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Riggers absent, Mr. Thomas absent, Mr. Rylance?
Yes.
Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
And Mr. Sanders votes yes.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Ambi. Okay, correspondence and information, we have a FOIA request from the West Virginia Open the Books for Employee Information, report of the cat and dog activity from the Upstate County Commission for December, resolution for the Upstate County Convention and Visitors Bureau, which Laura is here, and I think it will be pertinent to kind of discuss that here once we get down to F4. And then we also have a notice of advertising and bid package for the city of Buchanan, Colonial Arts Center Theater seating installation project contracts A and B. Under the consent agenda, we have the approval of the regular meeting minutes for 1.5, we do not have 1.19. We have approval of the building and wiring permits, approval of payment of bills, and also, we received two resignations for our planning commission. We, Sarah St. Clair, things at work have picked up for her, she, she doesn't feel that she has the time to serve anymore, as well as Rich Clemens has, no longer resides within the corporate limits of Buchanan. So I have asked two people, but I do not have, I don't, I don't have any, any confirmations back. So if you have any ideas, council, please talk to me about it next week or so, so we can approve two additional folks on our planning commission going into the April meeting. Under strategic issues for discussion and or vote, as, as it was just outlined, what we were talking about, monies, we have a, the revenue and expense review committee met earlier in the week, or was it this week or last week? Gosh, I don't even remember. I think it was last week. It was last week. To refer to council, a request from R26201, part of the request will be, we will take up in our budget sessions, because it doesn't affect us in this budget year, but the portion that does is a $2,000 request, and you have that document in your packet. It is right before the, the budget revision that we just passed. Ambi, I don't know, or Randy, if anybody wants to speak to it, but it's.
I've, I've attended, I think, of Mr. McCauley as well, Mr. Rylance, and you, Mr. Mayor, and Ambi have all attended the openings of the galleries. Very consistently, we've had some wonderful shows.
Right.
Very professionally done, very well done. I know that R26201, in particular, Bryson Van Osten has personally gone out of his way to, to bring in some outstanding artists and, and make sure they enjoyed their stay in Buchanan while they were here, and they became intern ambassadors to Buchanan when they leave. So this request, I think, reflects, R26201 asking for $1,000 per show of that, of that magnitude, and I think it's a great investment, so I would be happy to make a motion. And that, and, and part of the discussion, we had the motion and the second, is that covers the transportation of art to the gallery, artist costs for stay and meals, the staff costs for the facility, the printing of posters, installing and hanging, the artwork and repairing the walls after the art's taken down and so forth, so yes. Thank you, I made a motion, but McCauley.
I will share that up to this point, Bryson Van Osten was absorbing all these costs.
Right.
And I, I think it is important, and I think your statement that we create ambassadors, some of these artists have sold more stuff at this show that they had here than anywhere else in their career. So I think it's time we support that, since we've already passed the resolution, but we'll, we'll go about it this way.
All about having conversations, right?
Everything starts.
We have a motion by Mr. Sanders, we have a second by Mr. McCauley. Any further discussion, hearing none, call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Like sign opposed motion carries unanimously. Okay, it is our favorite time of year coming up, budget session is upon us, and I would like to ask for some dates that we could meet to begin our discussions.
Do we have to do it just calendar year?
Well, I got it. We're just, we're just, we're just going to say status quo and move on, huh?
Just do what you want, Ambi. Just do what you want, Ambi.
The state won't let me, and they won't let you either.
I would like to ask you, so we have municipal league 13 and 14, and a little bit, I have to be down there a little bit the morning of the 15th, but I'll be home by the afternoon, the 15th, and then 16th and 17th. Could we schedule a meeting either the afternoon of the 15th, or sometime during the day on the 16th, or sometime during the, I would hope for maybe morning portion of the day on the 17th? Would either of those dates work for you all? And again, this is just our first one. We just, we'll get the draft budget, we'll start going through some things, some highlights from Ambi, and then we'll begin to schedule our directors to come and present their wish lists. I said 15th, yeah.
I think 15th would be a good choice. That's a Wednesday.
Could we do maybe like 3:00 in the afternoon? Make sure I can get back from Charleston in time?
Yeah.
Good with that?
Go and work towards it.
Pam, are you okay with the 15th, with the 15th being a Wednesday at 3:00?
I'll have to make some arrangements. That's fine, but that's, that's the way it is. I'll make arrangements.
Okay. And then we'll go from there once we, we'll just set, no need to go too far in advance here. So the 15th at 3:00 in the afternoon, and we'll meet here and we'll start to go over our budget. Okay. I don't, do we want a motion? I don't think we, we got consensus.
Do you want us to set the future one, because you probably will need to have another one after that? And we can do it on the 15th if you like, we can see where...
Let's, let's meet on, let's, let's do that on the 15th. That way we just make sure we got everybody's schedules in line. So... Okay, the 15th it is, 3:00 in the afternoon here, and just a reminder, those meet, all of our meetings are open to the public with these budget sessions, even though they're working sessions, they are open to the public. Okay, F3, we have a recommendation from the Colonial Arts Center Board to direct the city attorney to draft an agreement to partner with local 501(c)(3) organization to accept donations on behalf of the CAC.
So who's the 501(c)(3)?
We need to determine a 501(c)(3). The City of Buckcannon is not a 501(c)(3).
They're not recommending one to us?
I'd probably, I mean, imagine that we want to establish one as like a foundation that's associated with theater.
Right.
So this agreement's just going to state, A, 501(c)(3)?
Well, I mean, no way.
We would have to name one.
Yeah, what it will probably, what I would recommend is that we establish one, begin that process.
How about we get Trinity Theater to do that?
Can I say something? The Colonial Arts Center has reached out to a couple of 501(c)(3)'s, but we need to verify with them that they are willing to do it. So the agreement needs to be processed, and then we'd have to bring it back to you. There are two, two organizations who state they would help with that. But there's instances where, you know, someone will not donate to a city. They want a 501(c)(3) status.
So we're asking the 501(c)(3) to be our fiscal agent?
Yes.
Yes, in a certain, not...
It's really...
For purposes of certain donations, not completely. I don't think this is a complete delegation of those responsibilities just for, just for where it matters.
R26201 has done that for us through, like, energy. First Energy had to fund their money to them, and then they gave the test.
Any foundation wants a 501(c)(3).
We've never had a formal, formal agreement with that, and the CAC board felt like there needed to be a formal agreement with that.
Well, the Arts Alliance, BCT, Create Buckcannon, R26201, we have some obvious partners.
Yeah, I don't think, we don't, we don't need to know that, but Pat, this...
No, this is, the action here is to direct the city attorney to make, to draft an agreement.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Sanders, second by Rylands. Any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Like, sign opposed. Motion, yes.
Before we go farther, our minute writer said we didn't make a motion on the consent agenda.
Did we not? Did I forget that? Sorry. Thank you, Alice.
All right, you're Alice. That's it.
Thank you, Alice. I was in Wonderland. Okay, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as I presented it.
Rylands.
Rylands.
Randy got all the other ones. Second.
Nothing like peer pressure.
I'll sit down with that because...
All right, a second by McCauley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, parliamentarian. Okay, F4, our final item of the evening. What, 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 the back of the room has, has been patiently waiting on. You will see, actually, up in the correspondence and information, I mentioned briefly, action taken by the Upstate County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Council, we discussed this in an executive session last time relative to property matters. The CBB is no longer able to operate the convention center at the Armory on Brushy Fork Road. And Laura Meadows is here with also Caitlin, the Event Center Director, is here to kind of help explain, should we have some questions about why that is. But for, for, just for simplicity's sake, the state of West Virginia, the legislature, and their infinite wisdom decided that in order for CBBS to operate and to gain and attain accreditation, which if they are not accredited, they cannot accept local hotel motel revenue. In order for them to gain and attain their accreditation, they have to operate on a 20, 40, 40 percentage of operation. And that, that, those percentages are, they cannot, they can't, the salaries cannot exceed 40%. The operating cannot exceed 20%, and the marketing for your region should be about 40%. Well, being in a smaller region as we are, and having the convention center operation underneath the umbrella of the CBB, that, that was throwing our, our percentages way off. We, we cannot, under the current, under the current system, gain accreditation or attain it, we already have it, to attain it with the current setup. Right now, we have 4% of our budget, I say our, it's the CBBS, the city doesn't own the CBB, I should say the CBB. The CBB's budget, 4% is all that can be allocated for area marketing. So that equates, equates to less than $5,000 for, for regional tourism initiatives. The salaries are way over 40% because of the convention center leg. Because, because we have an executive director, director of Laura, and then we have the Event Center Director in Caitlin. And then there's also, from time to time, some part-time assistants, because you can't ask somebody to work seven days a week when there are event, or when there are events at the convention center. So, and, and with that, the operational costs are also up because we have technically an office on Main Street, and then we have some, some, they have, they, 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 they have some, some responsibilities at the convention center itself. So with, the CBB has been meeting about this and has been talking about this. Mr. Sanders and I have been, have been in their meetings. Mr. Sanders is a member of the CBB Board as the city representative. And they have been, they've been talking about this for several weeks and months because they were, Laura was seeing the trend to where the, the numbers just weren't going to work for our current setup. So...
Mr. McHale, can I also add, as you were talking about the financial situation, another key point, I'm sorry.
We're going to give you a mic.
Do you want me just to go over there?
If you're going to be, yeah.
I can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll put one back here anyway in case Caitlin or Tammy has anything to add.
Or Alice.
Or Alice, yes.
The only thing I wanted to just add to the financial aspect is we also, on top of everything else, we do have a reduction of revenue of the hotel motel tax. So all those things combined has kind of made the perfect storm with the events and operations.
And one of the, the, some of the reasons you have a reduction in hotel motel tax, not only coming out of COVID, but also there's been a reduction of hotel and motel rooms.
Right. We've, I mean, we've lost hotel rooms, so I mean, we can't get those back at this point. So I mean, we are, we are at a permanent reduction of our hotel motel tax.
Which your, the city's contribution is roughly $95,000. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, we, we projected $100,000 for the CBB's portion for this current fiscal year, which I think we're right about on mark. And that's about a 30% reduction than what we typically had prior to COVID.
Right. And so just, just, so the city is, it acts as a vehicle for the hotel motel revenue to come in. By state code, we are required to invest 50% of hotel motel revenue toward the CBB. The City of Buckcannon actually does one better, and we invest 70% of our hotel motel revenue to the CBB, and 30% goes to assist with our flower and beautification program in downtown. So it's, it's something the CBB has been looking at, and if, and so just, just so we're on the same page, if the CBB were to relinquish control of the convention center, it, it puts, it puts their percentages much, much, much closer, and they fall in line with where they need to be to, to attain the accreditation. So that's where we are, and so the other side of the coin here is, is that the lease agreement with, with the Armory is with the City of Buckcannon. The City of Buckcannon named the Upstate County Convention and Visitors Bureau as the manager of the space. And that is, that is, those are the terms of the lease that we have in agreement with the Army National Guard. So if the CBB were to, which they are, they, they wish to not be our manager any longer, the City of Buckcannon, that does not terminate the agreement that the City of Buckcannon has with the Army National Guard. The City of Buckcannon is still a player and still has that lease. We have the decision before us this evening under F4 as to what do we do with that. The, the discussion we had in our executive session, following a meeting that Mr. Sanders, myself, Laura, Tammy, Caitlin, and a few members of the CBB Board, as well as Tabitha Perry from the Upstate County Commission, were posing the question as to what if the City of Buckcannon became the manage, the managing agent of the, the space? So it's, so we would, instead of naming a third party to manage the Event Center portion of the building, we would just take on that responsibility. We would then have the employee reporting to the city, and we would be the event manager and, and space manager for, for the facility. That's where we are. That's where the discussion is, and so...
So you said that if they decide to step away, but I think they have.
They have, yes. Yeah, we have that.
We're here.
We're here. We're here.
So I looked at...
Before, can I ask you, Laura, if you did any look, any look back at how active the Event Center was before COVID? Like, the number of events in a calendar year and how active it has been since post-COVID?
Yeah, so I can, I pulled revenue for different years. Our very first kind of full year that we operated the Event Center, our rental revenue was $26,900. Our best rental revenue in every year, I mean, they were small increases, but every year we could see small increases happen. Our best year was 2018 to 2019, that's a fiscal year, that was $31,500 revenue. And then, of course, the next following year was COVID. But year to date, right now, we have just shy of $21,000 rental revenue. We've had a lot of transition this past year, to be honest. Without transition and without kind of some of the other issues we've been dealing with, we would probably be pushing $30,000 in a typical year. So I mean, really, truly, the space is still being utilized to the capacity it's always been. It's just, you know, our financial situation as an organization that's really changed.
Thank you.
And that, that revenue doesn't meet your expenses.
Right.
So your, maybe your top best revenue, you only brought in half of what you needed to break even.
Yeah, so I mean, even with our best year of revenue, exactly, it was never a moneymaker for the CBB.
Or a break, I mean, we said, when this thing was started, it was, the goal was to break even.
Yeah.
And we've never done that.
Right.
And so there's, I think there's more at work here than just what we're talking about, you know? Things have changed since we started. You have a new Event Center 300 yards away that has food and beverage. You know, we have the Opera House downtown. None of those things were available back then. And for the, I mean, here's what I, I think that our first step should be to send a representative to talk to the National Guard and say, "Look, this never worked for us. Just explain the facts. We're, we're underwater on this thing from the get-go." We, and we were told initially on, when we went to Dennis Alexander, Sam Nolten, and myself went to Bridgeport Conference Center and talked to the general manager there, and he, we were told, "You cannot make it renting a room. You make your money on food and beverage." But this particular setup you have does not accommodate, you know, having a chef and everything. You just don't have that, the business volume. And if in our conversations with the Army National Guard, they, maybe they want to take it over. I mean, they're not going to tear that part of the building off, and if that retains the asset for our community, that people could still rent it, maybe that's it out. But I think everything starts with a conversation with the, the lease or to find out what, what other possible options are.
I just know, I, I agree with everything you said. Prefaced by saying that. The, the city has two financial obligations with respect to that. One is to the guard for 13% of all the utilities, 17, I'm sorry, 17% of all the utilities at the facility. The guard certainly could absorb those themselves if they so chose. However, for the next 40 years, the city is going to be paying off a loan to the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and the guard cannot, the guard cannot waive that, and the guard will not assume it. I'm, I, I don't speak for the guard certainly, but I can't imagine. And that's, that is money out the door that the city is going to be paying for the next 40 years, no matter what, what you do.
Well, Tom, I, I wouldn't, I mean, it sounds, you don't want to lose $3,300 a month, but I don't want to lose another $8,000 trying to keep the $3,300 afloat, so...
All I'm saying is that, that...
Yeah, that is. I agree with you.
Debt should be considered as some cost, and it should not come into, it should not factor into whatever decision you make. That is, that is a fixed cost that is going to exist, whatever the city wants to do with the space. From a, from a business perspective, this is just counsel that I'm offering you. You have to consider the break-even point shouldn't include the, the 17% and the, and the fee. Your calculation should just be the cost of operation, the variable costs of operation going forward. So if the, if the, if the city's operation of the facility will recover the cost of operation, but not the fixed costs of the debt service and the utility obligation, then the city is still losing less money than it would otherwise.
Well, I agree with you on the debt service, and that, you know, the utilities are part of operation expenses.
The, the guard would have to consent to release us from that obligation.
Yeah, well, I think, but how, you know, until we have, sit down and find out whether they're, you know, we're not doing anything, or we're doing something, what our options are, and...
That's right. I think, and it's all very valid, from what Laura's telling us, her best year was $31,500 in rental fees. So you lost whatever those, whatever payroll taxes went along with, with the, the manager of the facility. That's the salary. I'm guessing you lost probably 15, 20,000, probably 20, a little over $20,000 that year. Am I right?
Yeah, and I thought that.
Yeah, but I'm just, you know.
Yeah, but every year.
Because it looks like my calculations, you basically lost that 17% and then some change that, for the employee there. We, one other thing we need to recognize that we need to discuss tonight is we have an obligation to contracts that are out there up and, up through the, through the month of September. So no matter what we decide, the city has already committed through its agents, the CBB... city has already committed through its agents, the CVB, to a few signed contracts. One is not signed, but in theory, an agreement had been reached on April twenty-second. You got a signed contract on May fourth and a signed contract on September twenty-nine and thirty. We have to, we have to fulfill those obligations, the city.
Yeah, I agree.
And then there's others, I won't go through them, there's no use to name, name them, but there's others who have offers out there or conversations that have been out there between March thirty-first, when CVB will relinquish its management role, through the weekend of September twenty-nine and thirty. So we have to clean that up and work with that. And I, you know, think that the first step, I agree with Mr. Rollins, is very expeditiously, we schedule a conversation with the National Guard. And then council needs to consider if we do want to, as a city, take over the management role, which I think we should look at, and give it one more concerted effort. We don't need to get into that. I don't think we should get into that tonight until we talk with the National Guard. But I think we need to, to, to give it a full bet and have a serious conversation about it, our options, so that we can continue delivering services through that, through that event center.
Yeah, it's a great asset to the community.
Right.
I mean, when you, when you're out there at the Chamber Dinner and people from all around the state are here, they're looking, oh, man, where is, so it's, it's a big plus tonight. We don't want to lose it, but we don't want to, you don't want to continue going the path we are, and so we, something has to modify.
I mean, I will say, be fiscally irresponsible if we looked at it and did everything we could, and we knew going into it, we're going to lose a large amount of money every year. It would be more fiscally responsible to continue. Obviously, we have the obligation of the payment, the thirty-three hundred dollars a month, and if we have to pay the seventeen percent until that agreement, and, and just leave it inactive. Just, you know, if we can't do anything better for the Guard. So I think those are the options we have on the table, Mr. Mayor.
But you've also been frustrated with the part of the Guard's responsibility in maintaining the structure. We heard from, you have to call Columbus Ohio to change the temperature, and it, there's a F.
We have exterior lighting issues that have been documented, issues that have.
And there's just nothing, no response. So that, I think it's very important that Laura can give us all that information for whoever's going to talk to the Guard, that we explain our case of, you know, succinctly and objectively as to what is really happening here, and maybe, you know, you know, I'm hopeful that something can come, you know, come out of that. And I don't, investing in that is, is money well spent, I feel.
It really is.
And it's not, really doesn't have to pay for itself. We don't make the fire department or the police department pay for itself or other entities. So, but we want to be the best fiduciaries for the money that we can be and make this all work.
And the thing we can never lose sight of is if we can bring events into the community that create hotel lodging, then that hotel motel tax is still being generated. We, we hope those people shop within the city limits of Buchanan. One percent sales tax is being generated. So it's not always an immediate return that we see on paper that's, that the event itself pays, but it generates.
Yeah, the eating, shopping, staying is, is a, is a great benefit.
The only other thing I would add for the operation of the event center is kind of echoing what, what CJ's saying as far as it's, it might not be a moneymaker, but it is a service that's provided, and it has, it, it's a service. It's, it's not going to be a revenue generator, but it's a service. It's offered to our community for all of these other opportunities. And on the flip side, by, by us releasing our management role in the event center, to have the CVB go back to what the CVB can do to then partner with the continued operation of the event center and all the other things that are happening in Buchanan, that's only going to just increase the, all the activities that are happening. So I mean, for, to have a true healthy advertising campaign behind all of Buchanan is a huge asset that we've really kind of missed in the past few years because we've been kind of treading water, trying to see where we are, and this is where we are. So yeah, I, I think it's a difficult position, but it, it's all for the best.
Well, I, I just want to go on record too, of saying thank you, Laura, for your leadership. Again, I don't want us to miss the, the headline here, and that is, March thirty-first will be your last day. You, you've resigned to take care, to enjoy family for the summer and look at some new adventures afterwards, but the twelve years you've guided the CVB very well, and I want to congratulate you for that. Caitlin, Caitlin came to us from Stonewall Resort, which everybody is synonymous with great service and hospitality. So thank you for your efforts to this point. We don't know what the future holds at, at this juncture, but thank you very much for your support. And Tammy has been a great partner with the Chamber of Commerce, so thanks to everyone.
Thank you, Randy.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, so is it, is it council's, is it council's prerogative to take no action this evening to work to schedule a meeting and come back perhaps the next meeting with some findings?
I, I think I would like to say, and I don't, I don't feel it's appropriate to have a motion on this, but I would like to consent, or whatever the proper term would be, strongly tell those people out there that have events planned through September that the city will honor those agreements.
Yeah.
And absolutely produce wonderful events for them.
Yeah, I agree.
So I want that to be on record.
I agree. And I think, you know, we have to get more information to find out. So I would, as soon as we can set up a meeting with the Guard, I would do it. I don't, you know, I would encourage Laura to identify the issues, the maintenance request that have been not done, the parking lot, whatever, whatever it is that would make it a better place, then that we should have this information where whoever goes down there and tries to negotiate this.
I think, Mr. Mayor, I think we'll maybe try to reach out to, to the Guard tomorrow, if possible, set up a meeting, see what Tom's schedule is like, and begin a conversation. Laura, thank you for your, you, you spent the weekend sending notes over to us, working through the weekend on language and so forth. Thank you for that. Thank you. I know you'll continue to work side by side with us through this transition.
She's just trying to get to the finish line.
Laura, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask you to come back to the last meeting we have in March. I have a little, I have in mind a little presentation for you, so.
Hope there's cupcakes.
Is it a medal?
Yeah, okay. Actually, we do have a medal for you right here. Let me, let me just do some hard work on it. Pam, do you have something?
I said she can have my medal.
Okay.
Give her time.
No, no, we're good.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you all very much. Okay, we are down to council comments and announcements as we have gone through our strategic issues for discussion and our vote. We'll begin on the phone with Pam.
Okay, um, we had our first, first recreation advisory board meeting yesterday, and a lot of good conversations, a lot of ideas, and we had a really good group that's going to be working on that. We have two subcommittees that will be bringing insights and ideas and things they have found out to our board, and then, then we'll do our discussions, and then they will end up coming to city council. We talked, we talked about doing a pollinator's bargaining, rules and rights and recs that will come to city council. We also talked about new signs for our parks, and it was just a very, very good meeting, and I'm glad to be serving on it.
Thanks, Pam. We're glad you're serving on it as well. And I agree, it was, it was a good meeting.
Just want to remind us all that we still have some property matters pending. Mr. Skinner mentioned one of them to me just a little bit ago, and I echo the sentiments on Laura's twelve years of service, often a thankless job, and you throw in two and a half years' worth of a world pandemic in the mix, so that, you know, try to get through that, right? That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Again, ask that you keep Jack in your thoughts and prayers, and as he is at the ER. Dave Thomas is traveling, seeing his daughter and grandkids. So we are down to Mr. Rollins.
So for whatever reason, we've seen an uptick of transients downtown. So I have a third floor apartment that we were working on, and we kind of stopped, and we just left the door unlocked. But we went up there to get something about two weeks ago, and here's a guy sleeping up there, has his little heater plugged in, and we screamed, nothing. So we were like, oh my goodness, guy dead? And we went, kicked, kicked him a little bit, and he jumped up. Apparently, he's dead. But, and he ran off, and we didn't do anything. Well, today at Crepe Buchanan, Becky Westfall has the hairdresser, you know, shop right across from the CVB. Said she got up early or was there for some reason about six fifteen in the morning, and a guy with a backpack comes up to her front door and tries, starts to break, trying to break in. So she calls nine-one-one, and nothing happened. No officer was sent, and she never got any callback or follow-up. And one of the most important things, you know, that connects our public safety officers with the community is that follow-up, that connection, that what you're, you know, when you call. But apparently, this might have been nine-one-one not dispatched it or didn't think it was an issue. But if you're a lady inside your shop, and the front door is locked, and six in the morning, and some guy in a backpack is trying to get in the front door, that's pretty imperative. So I would just like us to try to, us to follow up, or myself, or whoever, to find out what happened, and that this is, this was very important to her, and I think it's important to all of us that we feel safe downtown and in our business. So that's it.
Thanks, CJ. Randy?
Well, we talked about Wamsby at the beginning of the meeting. I'm going to talk about it at the end of the meeting on Saturday, March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, at the Opera House on Main Street. Will be twenty-twenty-three Crepe Buchanan Elimination Dinner that will support Crepe Buchanan and Wamsby. So this is the, the information sheet. Social hour from six to six-thirty, dinner six-thirty to seven-fifteen. Elimination starts at six forty-five with a live auction, grand prize of one thousand dollars. Need not be present to win. Donation is thirty-five dollars for each ticket. You can buy your own private table. I think the table parade, if you want your own table, was three hundred and fifty dollars. So please, find a member of Crepe Buchanan and purchase your tickets. Half of the proceeds will go to Wamsby, the World Association of March Showband Expenses, and half to Crepe Buchanan to continue their good work. You can also get a hold of Melody Stimple.
We have tickets in the Chamber office, too, right?
What's that?
We have tickets in the.
Oh, that's even, oh, Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce and CVB office on Main Street has tickets for its app. See, those are great folks. Thank you very, very much. The, the great thing is, it's going to be an international themed event with items on each table from different countries that are participating in the Wamsby event. We have seventeen countries participating in total. So thank you to Crepe Buchanan. Come out, have a good time that evening. We want to fill the place up.
Thank you, sir. Tomorrow, our anticipated favorite sweet treats and pepperoni rolls return to the community. We will have a ribbon cutting scheduled tomorrow at three o'clock. The Chamber of Commerce will be facilitating that. So please come out and, and enjoy the ribbon cutting with the new owners of the Donut Spot on fifty-one North Locust Street, same location, and they will open at six AM. We also have scheduled our annual Chamber of Commerce Awards banquet and dinner that will be March sixteenth. So next council meeting, I'll be asking, once we, we, we'll, we'll have our typical requests to, to sponsor the event after the Revenue and Expense Review Committee meets next week, and I'll be asking council to consider moving our meeting from March sixteenth to March fourteenth that week because our, our Chamber Dinner is on March sixteenth at the Convention Center, and the theme this year is leading the way. So we're back to a full, a full event, and we look forward to it. We've had a very good inaugural session of Leadership Upstate, and so that's, that's kind of what's, that's what the theme is, is wrapped around, and our speaker will be Pam Ferris, as well as Kate Reed, who are head of Leadership West Virginia in Charleston. So please, you're encouraged to buy your tickets. They are on sale now. You can buy a table. You can sponsor. Tammy will be happy to talk to you about that if you stop by the office. So council will be looking for that line item on the agenda next meeting. So with that, I want to thank everybody for a good meeting. I hope everyone has a great weekend. Please come out and support the Polar Plunge next weekend to support the Special Olympics, and I'll try not to embarrass you all too much as I go into the, into the Cold River. I've already looked at the forecast. It's going to be forty degrees with mix of rain and snow.
The water is.
And, and, and the water will be colder than that. So that will be at the River Trail, at the boat ramp down by the, at the, at the end there where the parking lot is. At eight forty-nine, an entertaining motion that we adjourn.
So move.
All right. Have a great weekend.